City. Order, January eleventh, twenty twenty-three, convening at six P M. Council invites you to join down and meet on the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the firing of the United States of America and to the Republic of British States. In this call. Roll call, please.
Okay, council member Turner.
Here.
Council member Morton.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Powers.
Here.
Mayor Tom Cooley.
Here.
And absent is council member Stan Piler.
Thank you. Item number two on our agenda is public comment section is intended to provide members of the public with an opportunity to comment on any subject that does not appear on this agenda. Is there any public comment?
I don't see yet, but there's one person joining. I don't know if they were able to hear someone join in. We're in public comment period right now. If anyone has a public comment.
Day is seen done, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, city communications. And the first portion of that are reported from members of city council. Council member Turner.
None.
Anything to report?
I do not.
Council member Morton, can you report?
Yes, I attended two L E F S G meetings. And Angel program was providing Christmas to a hundred million children. And at once or meal, a Christmas meal for a hundred and eighteen families provided a meal.
Wow.
Uh, number Powers, can you report?
Uh, just a few items, discussion items only. I was contacted by the first of the bands who performed last summer. And anxious and hoping that they get a spot on this coming summer's agenda. And I told her that we would be starting to look. If we don't work within the next two or three months, I'm going to start missing. Most of the nights are already booked up by, by handful. So we will start that process and looking for some volunteers in public here elsewhere. And hope that we will team together to, to select some of the bands who will face some of the team together before, um, we really stretched it in last year. We worked with that. It was, uh, with seven nights of music and I'd like to think about cutting that back at least one. Uh, so maybe we can, uh, work on that. Uh, the other is not quite a personal item. Uh, regards the storms coming in and the ability to move snow around. First of all, I wanted to compliment, uh, the city's performance last night. I thought they did an excellent job and I heard from three different people that sucked. I thought so too. It was very efficient and very well done. I think they got over all their hiccups from the winter season. And I just, um, tried out my, after my old snow blower after I bought it in nineteen eighty-nine and it finally said no. And it was something, uh, in the, in the inner words, uh, went bad on it. So I decided on a new one and I got an electric. I got an eco and my gosh, it just was great. Oh, it's a third of the weight. It just did our driveway and backyard without a hiccup, uh, this morning. And I was very relieved. And that's all I have.
Okay, and my report to you thing is that, uh, attended numerous, uh, plus G meetings in the last several weeks, uh, much of that in preparation for the informational public workshops that are scheduled for this weekend. Friday evening at six thirty at the Grange Hall in Vinton. Uh, we will be having a public workshop and then again on Saturday morning at Memorial Hall. And encourage the public to come out and, uh, get some information on the proposed new fire district and get questions answered and, uh, your suggestions from the public at the same time. Uh, do we have any committee reports this evening? If not, we'll move on to, uh, part B, uh, staff communications. Do you have anything from the clerk or from the city? The city manager separately, anything from the clerk? Okay, we have a fire report this evening. I don't believe so. Carus report.
Uh, the sheriff's department called me with everything going on. They're gonna have to give the report next, next meeting. They apologized and just scurrying around, so.
Is, uh, would Nikki like to make, uh, a report for air quality?
Hi, um, sorry, I've got a bit of a sore throat today. There isn't much to report. Um, tomorrow is the first curtailment day that we've had since the Christmas holiday weekend. Um, so again, we just like to ask any residents who do not have their wood stove registered with the air district to give us a call so we can get that device registered. Um, and our website, mayardistrict.com has a little bit more of that information. We can always be reached by phone, um, eight, three, two, zero, one, zero, two. Um, other than that, we just hope everyone had a happy new year and yeah, stay out there.
Thank you, Mickey, for that report. We want to do see city manager report.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. I also wanted to reiterate that, uh, we're having that fire workshop for fire, uh, community workshop for the new fire district this weekend, uh, Saturday. That's the Portola one at ten A M. At the Betts building. And again, there's the one Friday that Mayor Cooley already mentioned. Um, we've been busy on, uh, when I say we've been busy, I, again, uh, I'm reporting it. So there's this illusion that I should take all the credit because I'm the one reporting, but staff has been very busy, including Susan Scarlett on updating our personnel policies, getting them to this year. Uh, and, um, and we have also the, probably the most important thing right now, we're, uh, we have sent out a notice to all, uh, utility customers that there will be, we will start initiating shut offs again. Uh, because of COVID, uh, there was no, uh, we, we weren't, no, no water companies were legally able to shut off water to folks that were in arrears. Well, we, we have a lot that are in arrears, but on April first, we will start initiating um, water shut offs and for anyone who is in arrears over sixty days, which is a lot of people to the tune of a little over two hundred thousand dollars. Um, we will be setting up payment plans for all these folks. We'll divide it out into twelve months. They're balanced by twelve months. Uh, no interest, of course. Um, and they will be able to make up their payments and they still have to stay current on the current bill. If not, they're, they will be initiated a sixty day notice to, to turn off. So, so we're trying to get back on top of things regarding our water and sewer utility building. Um, other than that, we've been working on, you know, trying, uh, trying to remove snow. Uh, we're constantly working on items like, uh, creating, uh, a, a, a better system in our, in our city for affordable housing and we're working on those types of projects. We'll, we'll probably be bringing something up sometime soon to, to discuss, uh, new tiny home ordinances that possibly can be, uh, permitted for, um, um, permanent residency. Some counties throughout the state are doing it. So just a, a, a list of a few other things, but we'll, we'll stop there.
Okay, and let me just clarify that, uh, these informational public workshops, uh, both of the meetings are fully open to anyone in the area who wishes to attend. You don't need to wait for the Saturday meeting or if it's more convenient for you, if you live in Portola and would like to, uh, go to the meeting on Friday evening, you're certainly welcome to do that or go to vote. We love to have a crowd and, uh, I, we're gonna have some, uh, excellent, uh, refreshments that are being, being provided through, uh, good ones to order and that's good food. And, uh, so there's some free food that goes with the deal too. We'll move on to item number four on our agenda this evening, resolution number two, five, three, seven concerning COVID remote meetings. Uh, the recommended action here is to review resolution two, five, three, seven, which re-ratifies proclamation state of emergency and reauthorize the local teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the city of Portola. John, do you have a report for us on that?
Uh, no, basically, yeah, basically it's the, the same thing as we'd say, we're just renewing our vows with the state for, uh, to be able to continue, uh, conducting our meetings as we're doing it. Uh, this will probably come to a close within a couple of months where we have to make a decision to probably go back to public meetings. Um, so this is just the, the thing we have to do every month. And we just.
The members of council have any questions? Well, open meeting to public comment, um, subject matter of item number four on the agenda. Resolution twenty-five, thirty-seven concerning COVID remark, remote meetings. Any public comment?
I don't see any.
Seeing none. Any discussion, council members?
Make believe that we approved resolution number twenty-five, thirty-seven.
One thing for approval by that, I'll second, the second by Bill. Any further discussion? We need a roll call vote.
Okay, council member Turner.
Yes.
Council member Morton.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powers.
Yes.
Mayor Cooley.
Yes.
And absent is council member Piler.
Motion is approved unanimously. Uh, item number five on the agenda, the consent agenda, items are expected to be routine, non-controversial, will act upon these one time of our discussion. Are there any members of the, uh, council who would, uh?
I have a couple of corrections to make in the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so what was almost reported here at some of the last Lapco meetings, last transportation meeting, mission meeting. And then, uh, I didn't go to the snow age program. I've been to the angel tree program.
Now, this is the part where the manager reserves the right to blame someone else.
Okay.
On those, those corrections, but we'll, we'll get them corrected.
And then it says, uh, Stan Piler, you know, nothing to report, but thank you, city, for your safe Christmas parade. Anyways, everyone happy on with it.
He, he did say thank you though.
Okay, okay.
And maybe he didn't say parade, but we'll correct that. We, we try to refer to the recording when there's wonderment about notes.
I had a question about.
So let me, uh, let me just make sure I got that right. So, uh, to, for the corrections, if we approve this with these corrections, Phil Olds attended transportation commission meeting, not Lapco. You, um, wha- what was the?
Angel.
It's the Angel Tree program and it was called, what, what is we? So angel, okay. All right, those are fun too. And, um, and then the, we'll check the, we'll check the recording for Stan's comments. Okay.
We have, you have some.
Yeah, I, I had a question about the mountain disposal, uh, sort of community program cleanup. And, um, the forty thousand, three fifty-two, seventy-six, uh, business for what, um, timeframe?
The, it would have, it would be through the timeframe of our last payroll, but some of those invoices um, were a little older because we, like a lot of people in the city of Portola, had a lot of questions regarding the invoices. So some of them could be two, three months old, but it was, it was within, it was probably within the last part of August, September, October was the bulk of that one. Maybe even actually earlier.
Okay, uh, my second question on that is how long have we been doing this community cleanup program?
We started last year, probably around June. Yeah, yeah.
So June twenty.
I, I think it was around June, but yeah.
Okay. And last question is where is the funding coming for this? Do we have a grant or is it just coming out of the general fund?
Um, there's the ARPA, it's the ARPA funding. Yeah. So you're asking regarding the item that's on the agenda regarding the, uh, the accounts payable, right? Is that right? Okay. Um, yeah, that, those funds that written on that check are coming out of the ARPA fund. American Recovery, uh, Susan.
Federal project that was one of the big packages to pass Congress last.
Yeah, uh, uh, it was something relief program, Susan.
Yeah, well, actually, it's a local fiscal recovery part of that. Um, the, uh, American Rescue Plan.
Rescue plan, yeah, the, the acronym was, I was missing the acronym for some reason. My brain wasn't connecting, but.
So is this money that we got through the government?
Yes.
Federal, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
It has specific parameters, uh, council member Turner, that I'd be happy to go over with you sometime.
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or are there any other interested parties? That would, uh, like anything to vote from this or review? And if not, then, uh, the chair would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda with amendments that have been, uh, let's see, Lindsay, uh, is showing up here in the public. Would you like to make a comment, Lindsay?
Thank you. The ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act is federal funding and that's something that's given to, uh, rural cities like Portola. So there wasn't really much that Portola had to do. It's just something that the government, the feds gave, which is wonderful for this program. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
With that, I'll make a motion at the adoption resolution number two, five, thirty-eight. And amendments as corrective amended and.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Powers and a second by Turner. Any, don't need any more discussion on that. Uh, we need a roll call vote.
Council member Turner.
I.
Council member Morton.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powers.
Yes.
Mayor Cooley.
Yes.
And absent is Piler.
Question is carried unanimously. Item number six on our agenda, public hearing and pose twenty-twenty-three refuse election rates. Uh, a hearing will be held, receive public comment on the rate increase. And then, uh, based on the input heard there, possibility of adopting resolution twenty-five, thirty-nine for twenty-twenty-three refuse collection rate. Are there any questions from the council members? Who staff on what we're doing here?
Um, after having read some of the, uh, written comments about it. Um, and heard other people complaining about things that are going on. I think we need to look into it. I don't know if we have to change some of our ordinances to accommodate that.
What we're talking about right now in this, uh, rate, specifically the rate increase. So if we want to bring other matters to the table, we can certainly do that, but I don't believe that it, uh, could really be a part of this unless you believe that that will. And, and somehow affect the wording. It's the wording in the contract with them is really pretty specific as long as economic conditions meet certain parameters, then it's sort of a mathematics problem to see what the rate increase will be. But, uh, we can certainly address, uh, other concerns at another time. If this has brought up those concerns, then we'll observe the purpose as well.
Yeah, and Mayor Cooley, I'll, I'll be happy to if the council wants to sort of address some of the, uh, some of the complaints and, and this, the side notes of this. But yes, indeed, this is for the, the rate that is set pretty strictly in the language of the contract, but there, there is definitely some other concerns that probably could have something to do with this, that the public would probably like to know what the city is doing to address those concerns. And I'll be happy to.
Would you like to comment on that now?
Um, I could, yeah, if you would like to know, um, like Mayor Cooley, uh, commented, um, this is for the rate increase. The rate increase was determined by certain mathematical, uh, functions that are outlined strictly in the franchise agreement and that math comes out sometimes the math differs between us and maybe the, uh, the, the franchisee. Um, but, uh, and there was a little bit of difference in the last meeting. We, we decided that, that our, our numbers were a little different than theirs, not much. So, so based on the provision of the contract that allows for periodical, periodic rate increases or adjustments, this is something that we just have to do based on contract, okay, and the agreement. However, it, it does bring up the fact that, I mean, it brings out, you know, this, this brings up complaints and, and I, I, I want to say going forward, well, and going back, um, I spend a lot of time during the week. And it's not really much of an exaggeration at all, probably not exaggeration, uh, every single week I deal with a complaint regarding I M D. And it's usually clerical, customer service, billing. I think they do pretty much a really good job picking up garbage, doing what they're supposed to do. Um, it is of my opinion, probably councils, that we do owe a fiduciary obligation to our citizens. Uh, you know, we do choose the franchise, um, contractor to remove garbage like every municipality does. Uh, some people call that a monopoly and it probably sort of is, but it's really difficult to have two, three, four different garbage companies going around and picking, picking up garbage. It just makes a, a mess of things. Um, but uh, the complaints are legitimate, they're valid. And if you were to, if someone were to ask me to, well, can you be more specific? I can't because they're really screwy. Every invoice is different. Every, every discrepancy is different. There's almost no rhyme to reason, but there is some pat, uh, patterns. Um, we will be addressing the compliance of our finance or of, of our franchise agreement with our franchisee and making sure they are complying with that agreement going forward. And if in the event that is a problem, then that's a different topic that we'll bring to the council. Hopefully that helps through a, whatever the city is the vision of the city staff regarding this topic.
I wanted to mention, uh, one thing, too, that as council members and staff, we compare the people we deal with with ourselves and how many times we really sought improvements over the systems by which we function. Uh, we've changed our system and can test on the headaches going forward and, and billing and process of billing. Um, but we're in constant uh, pursuit of the best way we can possibly do business. And these complaints accumulate in this round from, uh, customers of I M D are endemic of a long pattern of complaints that haven't really changed much over several years. And it just tells me that maybe in partnership, uh, we're going forward. Uh, expending our energy to, uh, submit suggestions to say, you know, when, when your entire business is doing a good job except for this one component of it, then it's time to work at, uh, major reconstruction back in the moment. Uh, just suggestions we can make. Uh, they are a private company and they will do what they do. But we certainly can, uh, voice our opinion and share with them, uh, the version complaints that come to us.
Tom, I had a, um, citizen reach out to me after the letters went out. And his biggest concern was that the monopoly, the franchise agreement. And he wanted to know why the city hadn't reached out to try to see if there was another garbage service that would come into the city. I don't know what the feasibility of that is with us having a franchise agreement, but is the franchise agreement, uh, something that is renewed year to year? Or is it a contract that is forever?
I don't know if this one's five, because I.
I believe that it's five years and it has been renewed at least once. Uh, and I think, was there a maximum limit of fifteen years? I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, and I, I'm not pulling that out of my head immediately right now too, but, but generally speaking, when you do these franchise agreements with these companies, they have to commit to an investment. So they're a longer term. In fact, a ten-year term is a sort of the standard term for a franchise agreement for garbage haulers in other municipalities, uh, so they can, they can do long-term financing and, and provide the service they need, but, um, so, so to sort of answer your constituents' question, the monopoly, we'll call it a monopoly because that's what they said and it's a, you know, it's a common term. That's, it's sort of a needed monopoly. But when we go out to bid, we, at that time, consider those who want to bid on removing garbage in the city of Portola. So you're not only, you're not, you, you don't always get, you know, a lot of, uh, applicants. But, uh, once we've, once we determine, once the city determines the award of that, um, they have to, and, and I see, uh, Steve is, Steve will answer those specific questions, but, um, I will just keep offering my colored commentary and put a period on it, but, uh, the, um, what our duty is, when, when they agree to an agreement, they have to comply with all items in the agreement, which may include some of the things that some of our constituents are complaining about, but I complain about. And they need to, they need to correct some of those things, or, you know, if there's a, literally a breach of, breach of agreement, then we, then we have that conversation before the time is up. And I see our attorney's hand up, so he may want to.
Let's, let's go to Steve if you're willing to give us some more information here, we would appreciate it.
And I will. I'll open the door for you here, Steve.
Uh, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, council members, members of the public. Uh, I wanted to, uh, first address, uh, council member Turner's question uh, as to the term of the agreement and our ability, uh, to, to look at alternate, uh, service providers. The current agreement, uh, was a, uh, ten-year agreement that began near the end of twenty seventeen and continues through December thirty-one of twenty twenty-seven. So we have, we're, we're only approximately halfway through the agreement. Uh, we have another five years, so we do not renew it uh, annually. Um, it is a ten-year agreement and it runs through the end of twenty twenty-seven. Um, as, uh, Um, as, uh, as Mr. Kennedy, um, you know, correctly stated. The reason why these types of agreements typically have a long term. Is that it requires the contractor generally to make or have a significant investment. Uh, in vehicles and other types of, um, uh, facilities and bins and carts. Uh, et cetera, that oftentimes it has to finance and and be able to have a. Um, a a secure revenue stream to be able to pay off, so that's, that's why. We have a long term agreement as we do. There are occasionally opportunities to, um, open the agreement. Uh, we have reviewed and I believe amended this agreement, I I believe twice already. Uh, to address, uh, issues that have come up, I I believe. I could be wrong, but I believe that we have, uh, opened the contract for review and and amendment. Uh, at the request of IMD in the past, and and that also presents an opportunity for us. Uh, to look at various issues that we would like to address. So, uh, there's an opportunity to discuss with IMD if if we want to consider. Um, addressing certain issues that are of concern to us. Uh, but as, uh, as the mayor and the city managers pointed out, tonight, the agenda item is really to consider. Um, the proposed, uh, rates for twenty twenty three and to conduct, conduct a public hearing and make a decision on that. Um, so I hope I've answered your question, council member Turner, but I'd be happy to, uh, answer additional questions.
Uh, thank you, Steve, that answers my question.
You're welcome.
Let me add, uh, this is, uh, Tom Cooley speaking. One additional consideration here that isn't, uh, immediately apparent is the. Inner relationship, uh, of this service with county facilities. And there are numerous points of interconnection with the county, not just because IMD also. Uh, picks up garbage at the eastern end of the county. But because the county owns some of the facilities that they operate out of and, uh. Uh, so these agreements are not easily, uh, modified, which again, just casually say, oh, we'll just go out to bed and. See who else is available. Uh, but there are certainly steps that can be taken and, uh, I think we need to have a. Another period of, uh, discussion on this, uh, when it's an agendaized item. Uh, with that, uh, I'm going to open the public hearing. Public hearing is on proposed twenty twenty three refuse collection rates. And, uh. The subject of adopting resolution twenty five twenty three for those collection rates. Is there any public comment?
I see one from Lindsay.
Thank you. Uh, as you are aware, I'm strongly against this additional and excessive increase for IMD. Due to this increase exceeding average income, but I do have a question. Does, and this might help, uh, with with my concerns and maybe others. Is there financial assistance for low income residents on IMD's garbage rates? Thank you.
Um, I'm not familiar with, with any assistance for that service. I am for others, but not that.
Steve, are you able to help us with that?
Yes, I did hear the question. Uh, I I'm not aware of any public assistance. Programs or funds that are available to the public to, uh, assist with the, uh, payment of. Of, uh, these types of service fees, um. Uh, the city does not have a program, um, there may be, um. Anyway, I I I'm not, I'm not aware of any program that would offer assistance to members of the public to pay for these. Regular ongoing fees.
We have another. Question from Mickey, I'll try to open the door for her here.
Yeah, um, the Air District does offer, um, low income specific. May, I want to see it's April through the first of October. Uh, a green waste pickup, so that's through IMD, it's a green waste bin. Um, and that can be applied for at the Air District, um, in the early spring to have your, um, compost picked up by IMD. Every Wednesday, I believe, so that's, doesn't really solve the ongoing regular trash issue, but it is something that we can, for low income residents.
Thank you, Mickey, for reminding us of that.
No problem.
Any other public comment? I don't see any further public comment, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Any further discussion by the council? Entertain a motion.
I'll move the adopt resolution two five three nine for twenty twenty three reconstruction rates.
Motion by Powers. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Morton, then moved and seconded. Further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Council member Turner.
I.
Council member Morton.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Powers.
Yes.
And Mayor Cooley.
Yes.
And absent is council member.
Motion is carried unanimously. Item number seven, we will go into closed session, so we're going with code section fifty four nine five seven. Uh, purpose of the closed session is probably employee performance evaluation of the interim city manager. Following our closed session, we will, uh, come back into regular session. Uh, make any announcements if there are any reportable action that has occurred in that closed session. Uh, I'm not able to give you a time specific or when that will happen, uh, but rest assured that we will. Take that procedure.
Okay, now I will try to navigate these breakout rooms, so be patient with me. And, uh. Okay. Uh, yeah, Linda's, okay, all right.
Okay, we're closing the special session and, uh, I'm making the announcement. There is no reportable action from our closed session. Uh, we're moving on to item eight on the agenda, which is adjournment, we stand adjourned. Everyone.
Bye bye, night night.